The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call the school board meeting to order. We will start with role call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Welch.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Smith.
Dawn, can you hear us?
You can't hear you.
I can hear you now. Thank you.
All right, she's here.
Vanden Hoewel.
Here.
Leighton Warren.
Here.
All right, all six board members are present. First item is looking for a motion to convene in closed session.
I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to WISSTATS 19.85 sub one sub C to consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over whom the board has jurisdiction and WISSTATS 19.851F to consider financial, medical, social, or personal personnel histories which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of persons referred to specifically to discuss the superintendent's administrative contract.
Second.
Beth, resent the vote.
Smith.
Hi.
Leighton Warren.
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel.
Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Welch.
Hi.
Motion carried six zero. We will convene in closed session coming back tonight at six o'clock. Thank you. All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We did take role and convene the meeting at four o'clock before going in closed session. We took attendance at that time and all board members were present. Also want to point out now we are joined tonight by members of our cabinet, members of our inner city student council, Stephanie Rios and Elise Williams, and just pointing out that our superintendent Steve Merly is excused from tonight's meeting. Moving into the opening activities, as I mentioned, we took role already, so the next thing we will do is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then last opening activity is the mission statement, and I will read that tonight. It is the mission of the Green Bay area public school district. We educate all students to be college career and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. All right, transitioning on to open forum, the first thing there is our inner city student council report, and so I will hand it over to Stephanie and Elise.
All right, so for our ICSC report for this meeting, for East, we're just gonna share some good news. So for East, they're having their art show celebration on April 27th and May 13th, and a golf outing is being held on June 11th to support East athletics, and the forensics team competed on Friday at the Madison State competition where three members won silver and two members won gold. And then for Preble, our boys track and field team took first place at the Green Bay City Championship. Preble more than doubled the points with second place team. And then for our forensics team, they competed at the Wisconsin Forensics Tournament at DeForest, Wisconsin, where three students took gold. Four students won one silver and one student took bronze. And then our girls track and field team took second at the Green Bay City meet last Thursday. And then last Friday, two students from Preble that competed at the tech challenge at NFTC earned $1,000 scholarships to attend NFTC by taking star first in their events. And then from Southwest, we have students, I heard students had a great time at their prom. And then on Tuesday night, two Culvers locations will be out partnering with the National Honor Society to donate a portion of their earnings to the Southwest chapter. I don't know if Elise has anything else she wants to add.
Um, we also had one person, um, one person to state, and then, um, we had three people do it virtually for forensics, so we don't know the results yet for the virtual people. Um, but yeah, it went really well, so, yeah.
Great. Uh, go ahead, Stephanie.
Sorry, and then for, we just have two more schools, but for West, a member of the forensics team earned a silver medal. And then the senior ball and prom is being held on April 30th, and then track team for West competed and they all scored above, they all placed in the top five in all their events. And then for Jado, I'll read a lot of it, it's been scheduled for Tuesday through Friday, and a spring dance is being planned for them as well. So, uh, it for ICSC report.
Great, thank you so much. Just a reminder that as the board meeting carries on, if there's anything that you want to weigh in on, you're a part of the meeting as well, so just get our attention, be happy to get your perspective on any of the topics. All right, moving on then to public forum, just a reminder that individuals are encouraged to participate in our board meetings either in person by arriving and filling out a registration form or the ability to register and participate virtually. Beth, can I just confirm no one registered for a call? Okay, thank you. We do have one public register participation form that I received, and so I would welcome Serena Reevey to the microphone. Serena, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to make your comments.
Hello, my name's Serena Reevee and I'm from Seymour, but I have four granddaughters and grandson that go to school with the Green Bay Public School. And that's why I'm here. I didn't know it was gonna be first. Really nervous, oh boy. Beth, I did get my hands on, um, the handbook for the board members. Wow, that's all I can say is I don't think you guys get paid enough. I also noted someplace in here that you can actually get that link fund, you can get more board members if you so choose. It's quite a process, but it is possible. I read that in the school district government in chapter 120, 120 and 02 and 01. The method of changing the number and appointment of election of school board members. I couldn't believe 44 schools for seven people? That's insane. I mean, how do you go to all the schools to see if you are following each and everything that's outlined in your pamphlet? I took a pencil to it. My math isn't the greatest, but 120, oh wait a minute, this back up. It said it take an average from 10 to 12 hours a month. I rounded to 10, it's easy math. So that comes out to, if you do 44, 1,480, oh no, wait a minute, that's not it either. I digress. Altogether, it comes out to 5,280 hours. And that does not include going out and reviewing the materials, go out and looking at the schools, going out and visiting. Yeah, I don't see how that that's possible. Anyway, hats off to you guys, moving right on. I was wonderful, I was wonderfully pleased that you guys did the pledge of allegiance. Yeah, and you still put under God in there. Thank you very much. I also have a question about the oath. I couldn't find anything on here when you give your oath. Do you put your hand on a Bible? Do you still have to do that? I know in, in over at Bayport, you do have to put your hand on the Bible, so nobody can answer. Okay. I would like to have that answered sometime. If you would do that, please. And then I see that, okay, I'm really nervous here.
You're doing great.
Okay. The change in the school board members, having more on, I mentioned that. Oh, yes. Now, I have seven letters here and it's addressed to me. And it is a questionnaire. I do not have a computer. And it's just basic questions, and I would love for you to answer and fill them back to me. I don't have the liberty to look on every issue that's been passed to see how you voted on that. I would greatly, greatly appreciate that. Where did this come from? Why am I here? Well, like I said, I have grandchildren in the school systems. There was an incident at Southwest. We look forward to the concerts. We really love the concerts, but I've noticed the last two years, there's been a digress. The songs are more dark. In fact, the lyrics aren't even published. And this last time, four of us almost got up and left, but my daughter begged us not to go because her daughter, which is our granddaughter, would be really, really upset if we did. If you don't know what I'm talking about, I implore you to look into it. The Southwest Choir recent event. I was so disappointed. I just want you to know, I don't know if you know this, the Christians are the number one persecuted faith in the whole world. You can look it up. I see a strong movement and putting a lid on anything that's faith-based. So I encourage you folks to look into this movement. I know you know what I'm referring to. So on that note, I don't have much else to say other than I pray that you will fill these out and bring it back or mail it to me. I'll even give you a coffee card at some of the local coffee shops if you want. I would like to take the time to pray. And the Father, I thank you for this, and I pray that you will be with them in all ways, that there'll be men and women of integrity, and that they'll come to know you with all their hearts, mind, and soul. These things are praying in your name, Jesus, your name only. Boy, I'm, next time I'm gonna be better at this, be more prepared. I apologize.
Serena, thank you very much for coming. If you want to give those.
Who are the, the ones that are on here? Who are the members?
We're all, we're all board members. There's only seven. There's six here. One is excused and then we'll have, there's one on virtually. Yeah, so thank you very much. All right, next on the open forum agenda is the recognition, and I think I'm handing it over to Laura McCoy.
Thank you, Eric. Um, so as a lot of people, I think everyone in the room tonight knows that this is Eric Vanden Hoewel's last meeting as our board president. And in order to honor his service, we're going to hear from some people. So Josh, if you'd like to, who's, who's first? Okay, we're gonna first hear from Michelle Langenfeld.
Hi, can you hear me? Good evening.
We can hear you, Michelle. Go ahead.
Hey, nice to hear your voice, Laura. Good evening. This is Michelle Langenfeld, and I'm calling tonight to express gratitude to school board president Eric Vanden Hoewel for his years of service to the district that actually began well before he was elected to the school board. I had the privilege to work with Eric over many years, both as a community partner when he served as a chief academic officer for Boys and Girls Club, as well as he was the interim CEO, and then following the election to the Board of Education, I had the privilege to work for him. Needless to say, I was very much looking forward to working with Eric when he was elected to serve on the board. After all, he was a parent. He had been a former teacher. He was a principal. And of course, his role as a chief academic officer and leader of the Boys and Girls Club demonstrated a lot of things I knew about Eric before he even came to serve as a board member. Eric believes all means all, and he has always put students in the center of decision-making. You know, in his role as chief academic officer for the Boys and Girls Club, we worked together a lot to ensure high-quality after-school programming for kids. But we also partnered on a number of innovative and successful initiatives, such as Be Great Graduate, that expanded to graduation coaches serving in the Green Bay Public School Secondary Schools today. So when Eric was elected, I knew he was going to be an excellent school board member, because why? He was an excellent leader. Over the years, we had difficult conversations, but he was always willing to listen with an open mind, an open heart, asking great questions and always wanting to hear all viewpoints. His care and compassion for all those he served never wavered. Eric is very humble. He was never driven by ego or position, but rather constancy of purpose. Staying focused on ensuring that all decisions were made in the best interest of students and of course, in his new role as a board member, the district. When Eric stepped up and put his new role on, all these experiences were invaluable, particularly in the pandemic. And while he and the board were often faced with extremely difficult decisions in these extraordinary times, both during my tenure and in the years to follow, his commitment to service and ensuring the well-being of all students in the district never, ever wavered. And you should be very proud of that, Eric. From the repurposing of Jefferson Elementary into a Head Start Learning Center, the opening of the Welcome Center, hiring of the next leader, and most recently, an online school for the youngest learners as well are just a few of your many accomplishments. So in closing, I know I'm just kicking this off, so there's gonna be a lot more that people will, will talk about this evening and thank Eric for. I'd just like to leave a quote that I shared during the pandemic with staff that reminds me of the work that Eric has done and the success and the transformational work he's engaged in over these years. The measure of who we are is what we do with what we have. Over the past three years, mostly in the pandemic, Eric, you have exhibited extraordinary leadership, service, and commitment to improving the educational experiences for students, staff, and families in the Green Bay area public schools. You have led with heart, compassion, and care, while always an unwavering focus on what matters most, the well-being of students, staff, and the district. You can leave with a sense of pride, knowing that you are leaving the district well-positioned to continue to move forward. So I want to personally thank you for your service to the district. And I have no doubt that you will continue to serve the district in many ways. Perhaps not in the same way you currently are, but I have no doubt you will continue to do so, and I wish you nothing but the very best. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to listening to others as well. Have a great evening, everyone. Be well.
Thank you, Michelle. It's always good to hear from you. Um, I think we do have another person waiting. Okay. Hey, Brenda.
Hello.
It's always good to hear from you too. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm Brenda Warren, and my brand new address as of three weeks ago is 11 Pondview Drive in Jericho, Vermont. But I wanted to call and express my sincere gratitude for Eric's board service and especially his leadership as president over the last two years. He led our district through what has probably been two of the most challenging years of my tenure on the board. And I'm sure two of the most challenging years in a very long time. During that time, he led with optimism, pragmatism, integrity, confidence, strength, and somehow managed to keep his sense of humor through it all. Being president of the board can be a thankless job with much of the work taking place behind the scenes. But I know Eric led us well, both at our meetings when the public was aware of it and behind the scenes with all of the work that the board president has to do. Students were always at the center of your decisions, Eric. You made, along with the well-being of our district, staff, and families. And that again was challenging during these last two years, maintaining that well-being for everyone. There were many times I really was in awe of your leadership. Our, our district benefited greatly from your board service, Eric, and your leadership, and I know you will be missed greatly. Thanks again for all you've done and all that you've sacrificed for our district.
Thank you, Brenda. It's, again, it's really good to hear from you. Thanks for calling in.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, is there anyone else? Go ahead, Christina.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. I am State Representative Christina Shelton and here tonight to speak a little bit about my friend, President Eric Vanden Hoewel and his time on the Green Bay School Board, and also to present to you a citation from the State Assembly. And I, is Brenda still with us? Did she leave? Gosh, I feel like she needs her own like cheering section for her time on the board too, but we are gonna be sending a citation to Brenda as well, celebrating her tenure on the board, which was incredible. And tiresome, especially towards the end. But here tonight, I am here to recognize Eric Vanden Hoewel, and I got to know Eric when we were both running competitive campaigns for our seat on the Green Bay School Board in the spring of 2019. And I'll never forget when I first met him for coffee at Kavarna, and I'm sitting across from him and I'm thinking, he's really nice and he's got some great ideas, but he's my, he's my competition, right? And I've gotta beat him. And if you know me, I'm very competitive. So I was very skeptical about him at first. Wondering if his, his, uh, his work and his belief in the public school system would come forward and come true in his service on the Green Bay School Board. And what I will tell you is that Eric is the real deal. He is a good friend. He's become like family to me and my family and my children and his wife and his children. And when we met after that election and we started talking about our shared vision for the Green Bay School Board, we started talking about what we would often refer to as building a bigger table and pulling up more chairs and really talking honestly about the work that needed to be done, building trust with community, really building engagement to build a community and a school district that works for all. And those conversations lit me up on the inside and my excitement for what was possible on the board. We went forward to serve together as you as president and me as vice president, and that time for me was really special. Sitting across from you in leadership, being able to shape the future of the school district is not something that I ever took lightly. And it certainly shaped where I am now. I wouldn't be doing what I am now had it not been for the time on this board with each of you. And also sitting next to Eric. You know, you never know what will happen when you decide to run for office, and you never know what will happen when you decide to serve an elected position. And COVID-19 presented tremendous challenges that were beyond anything any of us could ever imagine. And to be able to pivot on a dime, considering the safety and wellness of our students, staff, and families, weighing the heaviness of the decisions of virtual learning versus in-person, and how do we move forward? Those were some of the hardest conversations that I've ever been part of, and I can tell you that we wouldn't have gotten through it together had we not been able to center care for each other and for this district and all we do. So thank you for that, Eric. In closing, I just want to say that I know your service does not end here. You will move on to something else that will continue to shape this community in ways that we can't even imagine here at the board table. I also want to thank your wife, Jess, who's in the back, and your two kids. This is a family decision, and I know the, the, there were consequences for you and your family serving in this role over the past two years. I know that weighed on you, and so thank you to your, you and your family for doing that. So with that, I'm just gonna take a moment here and read the citation. Whereas Eric Vanden Hoewel was elected to the Green Bay Area Public School Board in April of 2019 and by the Board of Education in April 2020 to serve as board president. And whereas Eric has dedicated his professional career to youth development, working as a classroom teacher and elementary principal prior to serving on the school board. And whereas Eric approved district budgets that were balanced and for three consecutive years reduced the mill rate for property taxpayers. Whereas Eric oversaw the search and hiring of Superintendent Steve Merly in 2020. Whereas Eric served as board president with unwavering leadership despite great uncertainty regarding the COVID-19 pandemic and its impact on public education, kids, fam, and families. And whereas Eric leaves the district position for success with the addition of the GBAPS online school, increased efforts to retain and recruit qualified and caring staff, and the investment in a 10-year facility master plan process to address inequities in facilities and enrollment across the district. Therefore, let it be resolved that I, Christina Shelton, with the concurrence of Senator Eric Wimberger, on behalf of the Wisconsin State Legislature, under Assembly Rule 97, hereby offer the congratulations to Eric Vanden Hoewel for his public service to the students, teachers, staff, and families of the Green Bay Area Public School District. Congratulations, Eric, on your tenure here on the Green Bay School Board.
Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak to this? Cause I'm gonna, I'm gonna go last here. Um, okay. Um, oh, I'm gonna go last. You go ahead, Andrew.
I just wanna say what I really appreciate about Eric, and I would have, I would have understood if the choice went another way, I would have respected that too, but if you look, if you look nationally, when things really started heating up about, about COVID and people were starting to lose civility and it was, yeah, I certainly, I certainly experienced it too. People, a lot of school board members made the decision to just, to just, just bail. And like I said, that's in some cases, that was understandable. If safety is concerned, you know, that, that has to come first, but there are also people who continue to be involved in the difficult leadership during, during COVID, and you know, Eric stuck it out and yeah, I think as president, you're, I mean, we all got opinions brought to us on both sides about the. both sides about the COVID debate. And you know, for Eric to lay it right out there at the end and say, yeah, look, I, we did, we did change votes. I changed votes. We all changed votes because the, the science changed and that's the, that's the truth. And I think he, while, while COVID votes differed between us and there were, you know, there were differing opinions, we, we ended up in a, in a good place about that. And if, you know, if, it was good that we had that, you know, that consistency throughout COVID where it certainly would have been understandable. I don't question the decision of board members around the country who did feel they had to leave, but, but Eric stayed through that difficult period as the person who's probably the primary magnet for controversy being in a seat. So, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna try not to torture you too much more. But I got a few things to say. So, so the first time I met Eric was in this room actually about, I think, four years ago. We interviewed him to fill a spot. And I can honestly say, and I'm going to say this publicly on the record, you were my first choice, but I was outvoted. So the next time we met, it was, I think lunch or coffee or something like that, we got together and we talked about our district and our community. And I saw then, and I've told you this many times, I saw the leadership in you at that time. And I thought, boy, I hope he runs for school board. And then he did. And then he won. So he brings so much to our board that I actually wish I had in terms of like knowledge and a genuine comfort level with large organizations and an understanding of how good leadership impacts everything we do. So, and you know, it's, I think it's okay to acknowledge, we haven't always agreed either, but that's sort of the nature of the work. We haven't always been on the same page. And that was common, actually during, as Andrew said, as common during the pandemic, which is still very much part of our lives. We probably should have recognized that as well. It was common in all those excruciating board meetings where we made hard, as Christina mentioned, hard decisions on behalf of thousands of people. You know, but he stepped up and helped us navigate through just the worst of times. And I think it's important also to acknowledge that the leadership role came with a cost to his personal life. I think it's okay for us to acknowledge that as well. And he's funny. And I gotta tell you that, trust me when I say that a well-placed humorous remark can make a huge amount of difference when things are rough and you've had a long arduous discussion about things that are pretty heavy, you know? He brightens every room he comes into and at times that really, really matters. So I've been honored, I've been honored to serve with him. I'll miss him. But I know, like everyone has said, we all know he'll stay engaged. And actually, I'm kind of counting on that. Let's see here. And he has proven over and over that he cares about our school district and the larger community in which we all live. Eric, I wish you luck and I offer my heartfelt thank you for your service. And in recognition of that, there's a gift for you. And I'm just going to read the note that came with it. This is from an artist in our district. Hi, my name is Kong Bang. The art I drew in this form of a dragon is a representation of strength and detail. So I am glad to have made the art with, with what I love to, with what I love to do. In the future, I will pursue arts since it has been my dream career for the longest time. It was a struggle with how much art I had made in that I have made, working hard to get to this point on skills in the art progressions. Going back to the art I made, this dragon that I drew has a reflective scale which can be seen through the light. Representation of reflecting oneself. But dragons are not the only thing I draw, but it is the most detailed art for me. I want to get that to you. And.
It's just beautiful. Oh my gosh.
Yep. So I think that wraps up this portion. Sorry everyone, as we, as we take a break here to kind of get our, get ourselves together here, but again, thank you Eric. Is there anything you would like to say? I know it's asking a lot at this point, but feel free.
Serving in this position and giving back to the school district has been the most rewarding and difficult challenge. Enjoyed a lot of it and glad everyone knows that I'm not going anywhere. And it means a lot to see my family here because I've done a lot of it for them too and always want them to be proud of me. And so, thank you. And that's all.
Clapping up on the screen too. So, okay, I think we can move on now.
All right.
I'm okay. I think we can, we can keep going. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like removed? Andrew?
I'd like to remove the transfer of administrative staff item of personnel action. So the second item under F.
Okay. So we're not, not moving all of F. We would be approving the certified staff probationary contracts and certified.
Is it easier or is it the same for you? If I take it, it's the same. Then we'll just do the one.
Okay. All right. So removing the transfer of administrative staff. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I. Opposed? All right, motion carries six to zero. With that, item five, Andrew, I'll turn it over to you for transfer of administrative staff.
Historically, we, historically, we have voted, taken a separate vote on people at the, at the building principal level and higher, just to give it, just to give a chance to, you know, be out on, out on the record and letting people know who we're bringing into these key leadership positions. And Courtney Keane is our new, the recommended candidate for, for principal of Preble High School. So I will, see, I guess I'll, first I'll move the transfer of administrative staff as listed.
For a second.
Second.
Courtney comes to us with, with a lot of experience, 10 years of experience at, at Preble, 10 years of very quality experience where she has had a, had a hand in a lot of different things. I think people think, you know, historically, if you think 30, you know, 30 years ago of being called to the, being called to the AP's office, it was not as, not nearly as broad of a role as a, as an educational leader that it is now, being involved with, being involved with Avid, being involved with the 150th year anniversary of East, being involved with, being involved with peer mediation, something that's near, near and dear to me. And having, having experiences, experiences prior to being a teacher and then an associate principal in, in Green Bay with, with a variety of different sports and activities, which gives a perspective on that important dimension of, of student life. So I just wanted to make sure that we were able to, to highlight that a bit with the, you know, the 10 years, 10 years in, 10 years in Preble and 17, close to 17 in the, in the district is, is impressive track record of, of service. So I certainly am enthusiastic on voting, voting yes for Ms. Keane as the next principal of Preble.
I'd like to say a few things to Courtney. It's your turn to get, everyone say nice things about you. So I sat on the interview committee. It was a part of the parent group, the community group. And the first thing that stood out to me, we interviewed a number of candidates that day, both internal and external to our district. And what blew me away was how far above and beyond, you know, internal candidates always have a little bit of an edge, but just how impressive all of our internal candidates were that was just so, so stunning to me and just left me feeling very upbeat. But Courtney was, at least in my opinion, a great choice. And I think, you know, in addition to answering questions, what struck, what stuck out to me was just her, her pride for Preble, just how much she truly loves that school and how much of her career and how she grew and developed there. And as a formal Preble grad, that was something that really stuck out to me. And to know that we have a leader who is not just doing a job and could be at any school in the country and, you know, lead people and do all the hard work, but to have somebody who wants to be not only in our district but at Preble High School. And so Courtney, I appreciate your passion. Excited to watch you lead, which is not always easy, but I believe that you're the right person at the right time in the right position. And as everybody mentioned, I've got lots of free time on my hands. So if you need anything, give me a call, I'd be happy to help. So congratulations.
Sometimes we invite them to say something if they'd like to come to the table.
Courtney, would you like to say anything? You don't have to, it's kind of putting you on the spot.
This is something we offer, but you don't have to.
That's permission. All right. Beth, you want to do a voice vote? All right.
Welch.
I.
Smith.
I.
Leighton Warren.
I.
McCoy.
I.
Becker.
I.
Van den Hoogel.
I. Motion carries six to zero. Congratulations. All right. Moving on then to item number six, committee meeting reports. We'll start with the education committee meeting and I'll hand that over to committee chair Andrew Becker.
Okay. We had, we had two items. We had, we had a presentation on community schools and talked in, talked in detail, had a very good presentation about community schools and what that means, being a place where a comprehensive range of community services are available right in the, the school community. We talked a bit about how, well, there are, well, there are many, many places in the district where we enjoy a valuable partnership with, with one or two or a few community providers. It really all comes, all comes together in a, in a community school. And we looked at, talked a little bit about the, what makes us, what, what makes a school have that tag of community school and the dedicated focus around that, while taking nothing away from schools that have, you know, some community partnerships involved. So that was, that was very informative. There are, and while there are national, there is a national community schools movement and different organizations that have different components that identify was a community school, we're partnered with the United Way and what are the elements of a, of a community school and working together with, with them. And then we also had, also had discussions and some questions were, were taken about the, the mid-year AGR report. That's the program that, that was the successor to the Sage program, but still helps, includes extra funding to help maintain smaller class sizes and other interventions. And we discussed that and took some, some questions. See any, any question that was, yes Laura?
So I looked at the, obviously I looked at the, the presentation and I just had a question. Do you, did you talk at all in your committee meeting about expanding our community school program? Was there any discussion about that at this point?
I think it was, I think it was clear that conceptually, conceptually, there's interest and desire and a strong feeling of the benefits, but as to, we weren't at a point where we were mentioning where or when, but I guess there seemed little doubt to me that it's, it's, it's positive and desirable, but that also to do it right isn't just, it isn't just giving a room to several providers and, you know, changing your sign. It's really going through a process. So I, I think, is that fair? The desire is there and doing it right and identifying where would be a next step.
I really enjoyed looking at, this is something that, you know, I'm glad this is a priority in our district and, you know, where they, and it uses words like inclusive school culture. These, you know, this is something that we, we talk about, we preach and we live every day, you know? And things like the health of a school, you know, and the health of a community and that's all wrapped up in this work. And I'm just really proud our district does this work. And I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Yeah, those were our two items then for the report. Great. Thank you Andrew. Next, I'll move on to the operations committee meeting and I'll hand it over to Dawn Smith.
Thank you Eric. There are a lot of attachments in board, in board docs for the operations committee. So if you are looking for more detail than what I provided in my update, you will want to go out there and look. First, we had ATS and RCOM and they gave us an update on the community engagement summaries. English and Spanish surveys were sent to the community, approximately 400 were returned. We had 400, 40 people attend the in-person sessions. Future surveys will be sent to students and staff. And community members recognize that our outdoor space, that outdoor space is needed as part of upgrades. And media centers are spaces that are working well along with classrooms, art and music. There's future community desires that came out of the summary, security, bullying and school and bus safety, outdoor space, equity across the district, desire for quality learning environments and dealing with overcrowding. ATS and R will be building us maps of all our schools with rooms that don't meet the needs marked. We're still at the beginning of the process. They're currently ahead of schedule, about 50% of the way through their site visits. And the current ETA would have a completed report to the board in September. Josh came and gave us a procurement review, just going through and looking at our purchases that we've made over the past year. Like I said, this is all included, there's tons of stuff. Some of our big, big cost items were student transportation, the facilities master planning services, construction design services, waste management services. The large RFPs of the year were for student transportation services and the facilities master plan services. Categories. Categories with the largest spend were technology, teaching and learning, facilities and just general supplies. And um the other thing Josh called out that I think is important, the district has transitioned from leasing equipment to purchasing, but to purchasing equipment, which will allow us to sell um, to sell equipment at the time that the lifestyle is, life cycle is complete. Amy Sturks came and gave us a state of technology update. Um all K twelve students now have access to Chromebooks and the youngest learners have access to iPads. Um they've put um modernized charging stations in schools. So far this year, we've been able to support forty families with wired internet. Two hundred and twenty thousand internet connections have been provided to families. Um currently in the IT department, there's four programmers, um eight members of central registration and fifteen tech team members. And a technology committee has been put in place and security is a big focus for us. Um and that includes the security goals of awareness, training, ensuring strong passwords and multi-factor authentication. Um and the incident response will be completed in May. And then the final item on our operations committee was a food service update until now, and that was Josh also. Um we've been serving free meals under the seamless summer option, but this will end as of June thirtieth. It will be transitioning out of this program, which will change how our meals are handled. And um eligibility will need to be assessed. This is really going to bring us back to where we were in summer of twenty nineteen, so pre-pandemic. Our food service is experiencing supply chain issues, just like everybody else is right now. And they're um anticipating a rough school year due to supply changes. So I'm sure we will be getting updates on that throughout the course of the next school year. Any questions? Okay, that can, that concludes the operations committee report.
Great, thank you, Dawn. I appreciate it. Um and then policy and governance uh reports, and that'll come from Chair Laura Leighton Warren.
Good evening. Um as with the operations report, there's a, a quite a bit of content for the policy and governance committee as well. That is available. However, the, the main update that I want to share with you guys before I go into some of the details is that we recognize during this committee meeting, the importance of ensuring that the entire board participate in this full discussion. So that was actually um a big, a significant point of coming out of this meeting. So um Superintendent Merly uh went over some of the policy recommendations and um it will be bringing, will be bringing this back um to discuss in the full board, hopefully in June or July, and to be able to make um decisions on policy related, related class size at that time. And the hope is that we can have those put in place so that they can be updated and um ready to roll in January. And so that all, everything will be in place for that. So a lot of discussion still has to happen with this. Are any questions? That concludes my report.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. All right, moving on, uh we have two items in the discussion section. The first is the report of canvassers. Um and for that item, I will hand it over to our board clerk, Dawn Smith.
Alrighty, um the, and this document is also um attached to board docs if anybody wants to see it. We, the undersigned certify that we are members of the Board of Canvassers for Green Bay Area Public Schools, Green Bay, Brown County. We certify that the attached tabular statement of votes cast and summary statement of the Board of Canvassers, canvassed and prepared by us are correct and true as compiled from the original returns made by the clerk, Brown County, Green Bay Area Public Schools. We further determine and certify that the following persons received the greatest number of votes for the respective office for which each was a candidate on April fifth, twenty twenty. Um office, Green Bay Area Public Schools trustee Laura Leighton and Warren, Green Bay Area Public Schools trustee James Lyerly, Green Bay Area Public Schools trustee Brian Mills. Um and this was signed by Celestine Jeffries, Jamie Bouge and Katie Muloney.
Right, any um comments there? I guess I would just add uh congratulations and thank you. Uh thank you for the courage to step up. Thank you for uh volunteering to serve our school district. And um yeah, we're looking forward to watching your service.
For those people can't see, we do have James Lyerly and Brian Mills in our audience tonight. Very um happy to welcome them. And um, and uh I look forward to serving with you.
Go ahead, Andrew.
And for, um for those who may not know, the terms of new board members um everywhere in the state become official on the uh, the fourth Monday of the month.
All right, um next item for discussion is the potential November twenty-two referendum survey. Um so from a board perspective, uh survey was shared with us. Didn't attach it here just because we want to make sure that everyone's okay with the survey before it obviously goes out to the entire district. So um just wanted to, to let everyone know that we uh intend to gather that feedback as we prepare for a November uh referendum. Um was there any questions or comments from the board members um for the staff before uh we execute that survey? Everybody's comfortable with that. Um so I guess, I guess I would just share that it uh very valuable uh piece of uh feedback that we can gather from our community and hopefully everyone is encouraged to take that. I would assume that it'll be sent out as most of our, all of our materials are in multiple languages and try to encourage uh broad participation in that survey. All right, um moving on, discussion with potential action, uh naming of the GBAPS PK through five online school. And uh here to present that will be Vicky Bayer.
Thank you. We are joined tonight on screen uh by Adam Gluterman. He is our principal at Lincoln Elementary and our online PK through five program school, as well as Andrea Lanware, our executive director of elementary schools. We opened our pre-K five online school in the fall of twenty-one to address the need due to the pandemic. To tell you more about that and why we're coming to you to talk about naming that school, I'm going to turn it over to Adam.
Okay, thank you, Vicky. Um so as we have finished or are about to complete this uh first school year, um we have been able to work through a lot of things and really design a program that meets the needs of our students um and engage them in different ways. And as we look to continue this program moving forward or the school moving forward, um we feel it's really important to have a name um that, that meets the vision and the mission of the school, um but also kind of gives us our identity moving forward. Uh we, we are looking to market our school moving forward out um in the community. Um trying to increase enrollment uh for, for years to come. Uh currently, we have a hundred thirty-six students. And, and we do have several of those students returning, but we definitely feel like having that name gives us that identity um long-term um that we can really be pushing out to families.
Okay. All right, uh any questions, comments, uh reactions?
Um so looking at the, at the memo, um the recommendation, uh it says, we are recommending that the board take act- take one of two actions. Number one, vote to begin the board-approved committee process of naming the um, the online school as outlined by board policy, naming ancillary facilities. So and then the second option is to vote to exempt um the online school um in the, in the, exempt them from the committee process as outlined in um, and a different board policy. Um I don't know, I, I'm, I'm kind of torn about this and I, I um, we didn't, our, our board didn't really have any um, have any input into this process. Um and I'm, I, I'm leaning toward choosing um the first choice, uh which is to start, to begin the, the, the process um and to have a, kind of have a go at this um according to policy. So that's, that would be my take on that.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Um I, I agree. I think um, you know, we had a, a, we had a policy. Um and then we changed it to a, to a new policy and to um, you know, go away from that. The very first time we have the naming of a school, I don't, I don't think is a good idea. I, I think the, the fact that we have a committee process, it doesn't mean it um, doesn't mean it needs to drag out, doesn't mean it has to take a, a long time, but I think it should um, I think the committee should be convened and um should be able to get um, get it to work through soon. I'm sure, I'm sure names already in mind by staff would probably have, you know, certainly carry substantial weight, but the presence of uh, excuse me, presence of a um, doing this process could bring new ideas to the, to the table that might have been overlooked.
Adam, I'll just, just add um, e- everything that you said, giving that school an identity, marketing, growing. Um and everything that I have heard and observed is uh, you know, I, I believe the, the lifeblood of that school is, is a strong leader who's able to, to come before us. And you've done that multiple times. Um so I commend you for that. Uh clearly you take pride, not only in the Lincoln Elementary, but also the online school in uh probably a role that very few principals have ever had to do before. Um and, and I can't imagine that trying to operate a school within a school uh can be very easy. And seeing as the, it looks like the board would want to, to, to propose uh starting, you know, going through the process. And I know you already did the, you know, steps of that process. I don't think we need to, I, I won't be here, so I guess I don't want to speak. Uh but um two things, one, um I think that trying to blend two identities together, I, I mentioned what a challenge that could be. Um the other, only other thing that I would say is in naming that school, while there are uh probably benefits to trying to give them a similar name and to allow that identity to mesh a little bit easier, I, I would just say that I, I would anticipate under, especially under your leadership, Adam, that um the online school will expand to a size that it no longer fits at Lincoln Elementary, that we have so many online teachers and people choosing that option uh throughout the district that uh it would have to expand beyond that. So just, just something to, to think about. And again, I, I won't be here uh as the process plays out, but I, I want to make sure that I commend you on your leadership uh at, of both programs and uh clearly the passion that, that you've exhibited to the board multiple times. So thank you.
Thank you.
So, okay, yeah, so we're, we're not required to vote. It was with potential action. If that's uh where the board is feeling for them to, to continue on with the process and then bring it back to the board, um I think we're set. All right, thanks, Vicky. All right, uh moving on then, we have a, a number of action items. Um the first two are uh related to COVID. Item A, close contact tracing, isolation and quarantine. Um we have a motion here. Um if someone's prepared to make that motion or we can have some discussion first. You, you want to make the motion? We can still have discussion afterwards, but go ahead.
I move that effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, tracing of close contacts, quarantining and isolating of the district students and staff for COVID nineteen purposes shall be in accordance with the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, tracing of close contacts, quarantining and isolation protocols as presented be approved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's made and seconded, uh handed to Laura.
Um I'm wondering if Kristen can answer a question, Kristen Johnson?
Kristen, are you available? Tech issues.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I, I was just wondering, is there anyone who can kind of just um let people know, like the public? Um what, what is it about this new version that is like the high points of, of any changes are um? Is there anyone can talk about that? Sure.
Just, yep, just wait a second. We'll have somebody come and try to answer that for us. One of the things uh that I can just share, our data, COVID dashboard is still up and active uh on our website. And uh both cases in our community remain, you know, very, very, very low. And then same thing in other, the, the district um with our district numbers. So, but Lori.
That's very good.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll let uh, if, you're here, Lori, so thanks for jumping in.
All right, she's the expert, but I'll just share that in the communication that's going out tomorrow, what we share with our families is that the changes to the protocols will be that students and staff are no longer required to test for COVID nineteen in order to return to schoolwork when symptomatic. So right, so right now, if you have experiencing symptoms, you have to test negative before you can return back to school or work. That will no longer be required. Uh will no longer be con- doing contact tracing and that um we're still encouraging students and staff um to stay home when ill and test for COVID nineteen, whether either an antigen or a PCR test if they're sick. Um we're still asking our students and staff that if they um do test positive for COVID nineteen, to either contact the school nurse or Heidi Neverman here at the district so that again, we can continue to track those COVID nineteen cases. Now let Kristen add anything she has.
Thank you for jumping in there, Lori. I appreciate that. Kristen, how's the technology working?
That seems like it's working right now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. So I, I think, I think the question is just sort of uh from your perspective, uh why is, uh are these two motions coming forward? Um if you could just give us some background or perspective.
Yep, absolutely. And thank you for allowing me to speak. Um we've seen a huge number and I've been tracking it um since we came back to school after winter break. And we know Omicron was quite prevalent in January and we saw over half of our cases within the district between students and staff in the month of January alone. Um at that point, our highest number of students out that were positive was around five hundred and fifty. Staff was probably about a hundred and seventy-five in one particular day, right? And that's just positive cases. That's not even those that are out waiting for test results and, and quarantining. Um today, this morning, when we logged on, we have fifty-eight students that are in quarantine, waiting to test or just home ill, not testing. We had one positive this morning. We had three staff that were out quarantining and only one staff that was positive. And those numbers have held very, very steady, really since before we even took masks off. Um so I'm very excited about that. It seems, you know, just in the community itself, um our numbers have continued to decrease. I did look up a few other numbers as I was waiting um earlier today. And one of the things that was kind of interesting is the, our testing wastewater in Brown County. And since March thirteenth up until April eighth, there's been no significant change in COVID numbers within the wastewater treatment, you know, testing. Um and we know that that's a good predicament or a good predictive value of what's actually happening in the community also, even if people aren't testing.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate it. I don't have any other questions. Thanks.
Any questions?
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Kristen? All right, Kristen, just hold tight in case something comes up with the, the next uh COVID-related leave. But again, thank you uh for taking the time and for All right, Kristen, just hold tight in case something comes up with the, the next uh, COVID related leave, but again, thank you uh, for taking the time and for explaining that to us.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, uh, so we have a motion in a second, any other remarks? All right, Beth, I think we're all set.
All votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, motion carries six to zero, uh, the next action item is COVID nineteen related leave. Is there someone willing to make that motion?
I move that the Board of Education adopts the second revised board resolution related to COVID nineteen. For the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year for the duration of the COVID nineteen pandemic. To modify the employee handbook to provide COVID nineteen related leave as presented, be approved.
Second, second.
Any discussion on that policy? All right, Beth, we're set.
Online voting has been opened. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
My motion carries six to zero, um, moving on, uh, item C salary increase for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. For technical and professional staff.
I move that a four point seven percent salary increase be applied to the technical and professional staff salary. Schedule commencing July first, twenty twenty-two, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year as presented, be approved. Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to add, uh, this is a carryover from votes that we took in March, so. A lot of employee groups were voted on in March, this is the remainder of the employee groups, in case anyone is wondering why some are here and not others, so. Uh, Beth, we're all set.
Online voting has been opened. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
Motion carries six to zero, item D salary increase uh, for managers. Nancy, you want to keep going?
That a four point seven percent salary increase be applied to the manager's salary schedule. Commencing July first, twenty twenty-two, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Beth, we're set.
All votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
My motion carries six zero, item E salary increase for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year for administrators.
I move that a four point seven percent salary increase be applied to the administrator salary schedule. Commencing July first, twenty twenty-two, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Beth?
Online voting is open. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
Motion carries six to zero, item F wage increases for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year for plumbers.
I move that a four point seven percent wage increase be applied to the plumber's salary schedule. Commencing July first, twenty twenty-two, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year as presented, be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Beth?
All votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion carries six zero, item G wage increases for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year for executive assistants.
I move that a four point seven percent base wage increase be applied to the executive assistant salary schedule. Commencing July first, twenty twenty-two, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year as presented, be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Beth?
Voting is open. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
Motion carries six to zero, item H wage increase for twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year for support staff.
I move that a wage increase be applied to the support staff salary, salary schedules as set forth here and. Commencing July first, twenty twenty-two, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Beth?
Voting is open. All votes have been entered, uh, the result of the individual board member votes are as follows. Brandon Hubel abstain, Smith, yes, Becker, yes, McCoy, yes, Layton and Warren, yes, Welch, yes.
Motion carries five to zero, I'll just clarify, I have a, a member uh, of the staff in that uh, employee group, so I wanted to abstain. Uh, and final action items night, uh, wage increase fist for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year for clerical, food service maintenance. Monitors and trade staff.
I move that a four point seven percent wage increase be applied to the salary schedules of the clerical. Food service maintenance monitors, elementary and secondary and trade staff salary schedules commencing July first, twenty twenty-two. For the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Beth?
All votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion carries six to zero. All right, uh, moves on to item number ten, agenda setting, um, I do want to point out. Hasn't been officially posted yet, that the next meeting, there's an operations meeting on the eighteenth, April twenty-fifth, it says education and policy. It's likely that a special board meeting will be scheduled that day, is that that's the first day that the incoming board members. Uh, the, the new members can take their seat, um, so that meeting will likely be posted as a special meeting so that the board can take action, so. Um, there will probably be some coming changes, uh, changes to some of the postings that are out there. Uh, the next regular Board of Education meeting will be on Monday, May ninth. All right, any other comments before we adjourn? All right, with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I opposed? Motion carries six to zero, that concludes our special, our regular board meeting, thanks everyone.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero. Four four eight, two zero, two five, or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.